All right, I have six o'clock. Good evening, everyone. I'll call this committee of the whole meeting to order at 6:00 PM in council chambers. I do not believe we have any remote electronic attendance, so we move to our oaths of office. Chief, would you like to introduce our requested officers?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. I believe Officer Darren Southwell is first on the agenda. Is that correct?
Yep.
Officer Southwell, will you come in? I am certainly pleased to be here in front of you today to recognize Officer Darren Southwell, who's completed his eighteen-month probation. He was originally hired on May 3rd, 2021. Officer Southwell graduated from Rock Ridge High School in 2014. After high school, he attended Western Illinois University and enlisted in the United States Marine Corps. He served for four years before being hired by the Moline Police Department in 2021. Since being hired, Officer Southwell has been assigned to Third and Second Ship Patrol, and he is also a member of the Quad Cities Mobile Field Force Team. Officer Southwell is joined here tonight with his wife Savannah. She'll come forward in just a few minutes. Mayor, if you would administer the oath of office.
How about that Marine Corps business?
This is for you. If you would please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Darren Southwell.
I, Darren Southwell.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the position of police officer for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And do you hear him there? If you keep one, we can hear him.
If you want to come forward, I invite you to pin his badge on to complete his commission as a full police officer. And if you'd like, we'll take a couple of pictures here. You're just as much of a celebrity. And if you want to shake the council's hand now that we're past COVID pandemic protocols.
Congratulations, officers. Congratulations.
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 Council, I have one more officer who's completed their probation, Officer Isaac Raymond. Officer Isaac Raymond was also hired on May 3rd, 2021. He's a lifelong Moline resident. Graduated from Moline High School in 2016. Officer Raymond attended Blackhawk College and received his associate's degree. Prior to being hired with the Moline Police Department, he worked at the Rock Island County Sheriff's Department as a correctional officer in the jail. Since being hired by the Moline Police Department, Officer Raymond has organized Catch With A Cop community event, which was held in April this year, and he's currently assigned to Second Ship Patrol. Officer Raymond is joined by his wife Michaela, his father and mother, Tim and Erica, his mother-in-law Heather, and Aunt Gretchen, and brother Landon. Mayor, would you come forward and administer the oath of office?
I, Isaac Raymond.
I, Isaac Raymond.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer.
Having been duly appointed as a police officer.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
For the city of Moline, Illinois.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the state of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the position of police officer for the city of Moline, Illinois.
Of the position of police officer for the city of Moline, Illinois.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
By his wife Michaela up to pin his badge.
No one wants me in here.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you. Okay. Our next item is a proclamation. Requested by Women Impacting Public Policy and the Small Business Saturday Coalition to proclaim November 26, 2022, a Small Business Saturday. And the proclamation reads, whereas the government of Moline, Illinois celebrates local small businesses and the contributions they make to the local economy and community, and whereas Moline, Illinois supports local businesses that create jobs, boost the local economy, and preserve communities, and whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I singita raya padi, Mayor of Moline, do hereby proclaim November 26, 2022, a Small Business Saturday. Look forward to seeing many people out and about on November 26th.
Do we have anybody here from that organization?
I don't believe we have anyone from the organization today, so. We will share that with them, though. And we cannot start the public hearing ahead of 6:15, but we will stop at 6:15 to do that. So we will move public comment up at this time. Is there anyone here with public comment this evening? I know we have one email to share, email of public comment. Ms. Clerk?
So the email public comment is from Jonathan Marler, and he's with Keep Pushing Skate Shop. Good afternoon, everyone. I wanted to reach out to you all because I will be unable to attend tonight's meeting to talk about the future of Moline Skate Park, but wanted to share some of my thoughts with you via email. I started skateboarding almost 21 years ago now, and from the moment I got my first skateboard, it took over my life. It is on my mind 24/7, and now I have my dream job working with skateboards here in Moline. I come from a military family background, which caused us to move every six months to a year, depending on the jobs my family took. This was great for me because of skateboarding. I knew I could always find friends wherever I went. I've been fortunate enough to be able to skate in and out of the country, finding skate parks everywhere I went. Now, at the age of 31, it has been my goal to make a difference with skateboarding. Since opening the shop, I have sold over 1,300 boards in less than a year and a half. This shows how big of a skate scene we have around the Quad Cities. I've also been fortunate enough to have donated over 20 full completes to our beginners. Last year, I made an announcement to all students that if they made a GPA of 3.0 or higher, they would receive a discount of 10%, and 4.0 would get 15% to encourage our youth to stay in school and work hard. Skateboarding is such a positive outlet for not only the youth, but any rider of any kind. I know that sometimes we get stereotyped as rebellious and destructive. Skateboarding was my escape from the world. Whenever I was sad, upset, frustrated, I knew I had my skateboard to help me instead of drinking or drugs. Skateboarding is now an Olympic sport, which is a huge win for us because we've always been treated as outcasts. So it's so great to see us on such a huge platform in front of the world. I really hope you see the benefits of having a park in our backyard for us to use as a second home. I will finish this email by saying this. Baseball players have baseball fields. Football players have football fields, and pretty much every other sport or activity has something dedicated to them. But we resort to the streets because it's all we have and get into trouble for using it. I thank you all for taking the time to read this, and I hope and pray you can see the amazing things this park could do for Moline.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll move to questions on the agenda. There's two updates for us this evening. Staff is pulling item 18.1, which is a Councilable 3026-2022. That will come back at a later time period. And item 16.3, which is 1183-2022. There's a Scrivener error that has been corrected, and a copy was provided to you at your places, I believe. And with that, we still have five minutes, so we'll move into our COW agenda items. First one is 8.1, a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to rent a portable compressed natural gas CNG skid from Clean Energy for a not-to-exceed amount of $52,500 to temporarily supply CNG to the city's fleet with half the cost to be paid by MetroLink in accordance with the maintenance portion of the city's existing intergovernmental agreement with MetroLink. Mr. Vitas?
Yes, very, very briefly, Mayor and Council. As you know, earlier this year, the CNG station was actually struck by lightning, and it has not been operational since that time. It could not be repaired. While we wait for MetroLink to work with us toward the RFP and the funding which they secured for the replacement CNG station, we've been using not only a location in Davenport on rare occasion, but using these facilities at MetroLink through their good graces. And that's how we are actually fueling our CNG equipment at the present time. This is a temporary fix for the next five months while we go through the RFP process in hopes that we can have the new CNG station up and running, and maybe not at that exact location since it's been hit by lightning more than once at that spot. So something about that spot is no good, and we don't know what it is. But it's just a bad luck location, so we'll be looking at alternative locations for the new equipment, and we recommend approval of this agreement with not only MetroLink. We graciously extended to pay for half of the cost.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. Motion by Alderman Waldron, seconded by Alder Person Moyer. Get my language right tonight. Any discussion? Yes, Mr. Went?
Was this also updated, the resolution? Because what was the?
Yeah, we did see an email today, so.
I mean, there's.
There was a lot of emails.
Yeah. Because I think that the one that was originally posted, I'm trying to go through to see if it's been reposted.
It has been.
It was corrected, I believe, from 52.5.
Moved up to 52,500. I think it was in there.
At 45,000.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what we read, too, when I read it out. Okay, so that's set. Any further discussion?
When was that? Was that just updated today?
Yeah, just this afternoon.
Okay, all right. Okay. I just want to make sure we are all on the same page on what we're voting for.
Thank you. Hearing no further discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion passes. We move to 8.2. Resolution authorizing an agreement between Bass Street Landing Special Service Area Number Five Board and NAI Rule Commercial Company for property maintenance services for Special Service Area Number Five for two successive one-year terms. Mr. Vitas?
Mayor and Council, last year in 2021, in July, we issued an RFP specifically for the maintenance and upkeep for Special Service Area Number Five and Six, actually. When we did that, the council awarded a contract based upon a one-year contract renewal for September of '21 till September of '22, and then two additional one-year renewals. During the transition, after Mr. Manis's absence from the city, neither Rule nor the city reached out to one another to extend, to offer the extension. And so we reached out to them, and they have agreed that there would be no price increase to the contract, even though things, the cost of goods and services, has gone up tremendously due to inflation. They have honored the numbers that they submitted in the prior year, and we're recommending approval of the extension for an additional year at this time.
Motion to approve.
Yes, oh, is there a second? Thank you. Motion by Waldron, seconded by Moyer. Mr. Went?
And just for clarification, this was amended as well, the resolution?
Correct.
Because you had mentioned the one during the council, but the COW was also amended to the 2022.
2022, correct.
Right. And just for clarification, because it wasn't included with the materials, Exhibit Two and Exhibit Three are the same that were attached to the old.
Correct. They remain intact. That is correct.
Anything further? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes, and I have exactly 6:15. So we will go back to number five, public hearing on 2023 budget. So I will hereby open this public hearing and turn things over to Carol, who has a PowerPoint for us.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, we are holding the public hearing on the proposed 23 budget for the city of Moline. The budget is balanced as presented, and it totals $159,015,394. Illinois state statute requires that the city conduct a public hearing to obtain taxpayer comments prior to the adoption of the budget. The public hearing notice was published in the Dispatch Rock Island Argus Newspaper on Sunday, November 6, 2022. The proposed budget ordinance is available for city public inspection on the city's website, as well as at the finance office. Subsequent to this public hearing, city council reserves the right to revise, modify, alter, increase, or decrease items contained in the proposed budget ordinance without further hearing or notice. And to talk about the process that we have gone through in order to get to here, we started, clear back in June of 2022. Department directors met with their staff to determine budgetary needs. Then their proposed budgets were reviewed by Bob and myself, and the city administrator then worked to present a balanced budget proposal to city council for their review on October 18, 2022. Budget work sessions were then held on Saturday, October 25 of 2022, as well as the Committee of the Whole on November 1. And tonight, we will also have an additional informational item to review the last two outstanding items that we discussed on the first. Despite rising inflation and growing economic uncertainty on a national scale, city finances are in a strong financial position, and the 2023 budget is well-positioned to weather any short-term potential downturn in the economy. The proposed budget continues to maintain healthy fund balance reserves within city policy and to help guard against unexpected increased expenses and reduced revenues. The budget slows the pace of hiring new personnel. In '22, we hired 11 new positions, and this year, the budget proposes only one new position, which we will be discussing here later tonight with the grant coordinator. It funds only essential operating expenditures in the city, and it continues to invest very heavily in citywide infrastructure, particularly in streets, water, and sanitary sewer improvements. And most of all, the budget aligns with the city council's strategic plan. The budget as proposed. Oops. The budget as proposed funds all existing city services and authorized personnel and is purposely conservative to account for inflationary pressures and concerns about the broader economy. The $159 million budget is broken down as follows, as you can see on the pie chart. And three of our largest categories are salaries and benefits, which comprise $47 million and about 30% of the budget. The next largest bucket is our citywide capital improvements, which is $40,866,000, or about 17%. And then the last largest bucket, over $50 million for operating expenditures that make up about 32% of the budget. Operating expenditures on an average are up about 4.7%. And it's a combination with inflation that began to increase during this current year with an average over 8%. On the revenue side, the budget gross revenues total $159,015,394,000. We have 14 main categories of revenues that are shown on this schedule. And as you can see, we have very diversified revenue streams. We're very fortunate with that because some cities are really, have a couple of revenue streams that are very, very high, so they're highly reliant. We are very diversified. The budget in total with our revenues, we are up over $3.7 million from last year. So again, we can feel very fortunate with that, that we've got strong intergovernmental revenue, as well as we've seen some fee increases now with our charges for services. As we talk about diversified revenue streams, two of the largest revenue streams that make up our budget are the intergovernmental revenue that we just talked about, and that is sales tax, MFT, income tax, replacement credits on corporate tax, those types of things. And that is about 22.5% of the entire budget. Next in line is about $28 million for charges for services that are comprised largely of user fees by our enterprise funds. But we've also got charges for services in our parks, in our library, as well as our general fund, but primarily in the enterprise funds. In 2023, we are proposing a new revenue source for cannabis tax. And we have actually created a separate fund for that that we have had a lot of discussions about. We project that revenue may be as high as a half a million dollars, but not knowing when that revenue stream will precisely begin or exactly how much to anticipate, since it's our first year, we are only allocating $225,000 this year. And those two items that make up that total appropriation is $150,000 for special events for our public, and then $75,000 towards public art. So that leaves us potentially $275,000 that as we enter the year, the council will be making some choices potentially on how to allocate those funds. Property taxes make up less than 10% of our total revenue stream. And again, we can feel very fortunate for that. And while total property taxes levied are proposed to increase from $15,308,878 in the current year up to $15,817,478 in 2023, most of our taxpayers will not pay more in taxes due to a projected levy rate reduction. And again, that is based on our tentative EAVs. Going into a little more detail on our property taxes, the total tentative EAV for '22 collectible in '23 totals $853,393,598,000. That is up $65.8 million, or 8.35% since '21. And so we've had some really nice growth, and we all know that from our own home values going up. The EAV growth attributable is attributable to a mix of modest new development, the closure of TIF I, and increasing home values.
Do we, let me ask a question before I recognize you. In this public hearing, do we have commentary from the council or questions? Or just reserve it for the agenda item?
It's better to reserve it, but some of you are all members of it.
Okay.
But you could comment as appropriate.
Okay, Mr. Went?
Just for clarification, because this was in the press release that was sent out as well. Our EAV as a city did not increase 8.35%. The taxable amount that is being taxed for this levy increased that amount because we added the downtown to it.
That is correct.
Okay. I think that we have to be very precise in what we're saying because in like, in the press release, it says essentially the total taxable value of all residential, commercial, and industrial properties within the city limits grew by 8.35%. And that's just not true. What is, what can be taxable, that, because some of that was removed out of a TIF and now can go to the, to the general fund, or however we levy it, that grew. But the EAV values of all of our properties did not go up 8.35%.
Well.
Right?
The certified, not certified, it's our tentative assessed valuations from the county lists our tentative EAV as $853 million.
But those properties did not increase by 8.35%.
But the total property tax values did increase, so, you know, it's a matter of how you describe it.
Well, the properties that are eligible, the EAV of those did.
I'm going to call this to order. We can spend time on that, or we can, I can suggest that Mr. Vitas, in his role, make sure that there's communication on clarity between our communications that go out in our staff, and we can handle it that way for the next time there's communication about it.
We just don't want this misleading the public.
Correct. Understood. Excuse me, I didn't give you the floor. That is understood. I believe we understand your point, and so we'll continue with the public hearing.
Thank you. Based on the tentative EAV and the 2003 levy dollars needed to balance the budget that we've talked about during our budget discussions, a decrease in the levy rate is projected to be about 0.02 cents, down from $1.9437 in '22 to potentially down to $1.85, $1.85348 in '23. And again, this is prior to assessment appeals that were filed with the county. And I know that our city attorney is going to aggressively go after and protest those appeals. The total proposed property taxes levied in '23 total $15,817,478 via a motion from November 1, and that is up $508,600 from '22, or about 3.322% of an increase. And again, if we look at the colored box in the middle of this screen, for the FY '23 budget, even though property taxes collected are projected to increase the $508,000, most of our existing taxpayers in Moline will not see increases due to a projected levy increase of the nine cents. And the breakdown of the new property tax dollars, we anticipate $26,825 coming from new construction. $512,188 are available from the TIF I closing. And we are projecting a decrease of $30,413 from our existing properties citywide for a total of the $508,600. The property tax allocation been broken out. If we go down through that middle column for 2023, you'll see the police and fire pensions. Fire is $1,955,000, police at $2,077,000. If you look to the third column, between those two, that levy amount in total is just about a wash. For the general fund, our property taxes are actually projected to be zero for 2023, or a reduction of $873,000. As you know, we have a debt levy for police and fire to pay for our pension obligation bonds. The total between those are about $5.5 million, and it's actually decreasing a little over $3,000 in the current year. The parks fund, their levy is projected at $3,163,000 for an increase of 1.4 million. And previously, we paid or supplemented the parks budget through a transfer from the general fund. And this year, that helped greatly with the increased inflation that freed up dollars in the general fund to help pay for police, fire, and the other operating. operating expenses in the general fund. In the library, based on, they had vacancies and just their, the way their operating fell, they were able to reduce their levy request down to $3 million, or a reduction of $59,000. In addition, we've got SSA V and SSA VI, and both of those levy requests from their boards stayed the same. If we take a look at the impact on our property tax, the properties here, the impact on an average $127,000 residential property is projected to be down about $2, or 0.19%. And again, this is based on the tentative EAV that is assuming citywide on residential property, that residential properties grew at a 4.665% and had an average of an 82.77% exemption rate. On the commercial property side, the average property total $652,000, and we anticipate on average that their taxes will go down about $7 compared to the current year. And again, the growth on commercial was 4.686%, and their average exemption rate is just, just barely under the 100% mark. And again, these are calculated prior to appeals. So once those come through, these numbers will change a little bit, but right now, with the information we have, this is the calculation. We also have modest increases in our stormwater and sanitation utility fees that we are proposing, and it is to help fill budget gaps. The impact on a Moline homeowner for stormwater fees is an increase for a medium-sized lot of $1.12 per month, and this is largely going to help pay for more stormwater projects. And the fee in stormwater has not been raised since 2005, and the council has previously adopted an ordinance for those fee increases. For sanitation, we are recommending an increase of 66 cents per month, again, simply to balance the budget, to make things whole. The last increase was in 2018, and our public works director will be coming back to council here prior to the year and with an ordinance for your consideration. Again, the proposed increases in these two utility funds will help fill budget gaps due to ongoing increased operating and capital expenditures, and are necessary to maintain financial stability in each of those funds. And we have talked, as we move forward through '23 into '24, that we are going to be working towards monthly utility billing that we are targeting for '24. So as we move through that year, we will keep you updated on the progress, and, and if, if we do indeed potentially need some additional staffing to help cover that, but we aren't going to hire anyone until we know for sure that that need is there. Going forward, fees in all of our utility funds will be reviewed on an annual basis by council and will be adjusted as needed. Then as we head into our expenditures, again, our expenditures total $159,015,394. We have 12 main categories of expenditures, and the top three categories are number one in public safety, which is our police and fire budget, and that totals $3460,000. Our second largest category is our capital projects, and the portion that is expensed in governmental funds is $24 million, and it makes up approximately 17% of our budget. And then lastly is our business type for all of our enterprise funds, 22.9%. When we look at a comparison from last year expenditures, our budget, even though it has grown $3.7 million over last year, only equates to a 2.4% increase. So in spite of the fact that we have had inflation, we have filled a lot of our vacancies, and again, a lot of those are at the beginning of the pay scale instead of at the top of the pay scale. Your department heads have tried very, very hard to keep operating expenses low and to realistically be projecting what they need due to the inflation. So it's about a 2.4% over 2022 levels. Total capital projects, just to give a highlight, again, this is one of our major project, our major categories of spending. And the '23 budget proposes $40,866,000 worth of projects, and that is a combination of all of our governmental funds, as well as all of our enterprise funds. And just some of those highlights is $23 million for streets, water, and sanitary sewer projects, very significant dollars. We've also allocated $8.5 million for parks projects, including the Riverside Pool improvements. We've got $7.1 million in capital equipment and other improvements, including $2.7 million to start the design of South Slope. And again, we will come forward with council prior to spending those dollars. And then we've got $2.2 million in replacement, as well as new vehicle requests. Another large category is our ARPA funding, and it's hard to believe, but we are on our third year of funding for our ARPA projects. Our total allocation was $20.8 million, and in 2023, we've allocated $5,39730. The highlights coming up for 2023 for projects that are over a half a million dollars include the first phase of Seventh Avenue reconstruction. As you know, the city's portion on that project is 5.7. This is the first $500,000 that we'll be seeing going towards that project, and we've got, I think, four or five years to get that completed. For our one-stop shop, those dollars have been reduced to a half a million dollars, and we're going to use that largely for software. And we've got over $1 million included for bikeways and multimodal. We've got broadband installation budgeted, flood mitigation, and then the first phase of a secure quiet zone. And again, we are applying for a federal grant for those dollars. And so significant money in '23. I will point out, as we end 2022, we may be seeing some of that $9 million that's going to be moving into '23, '24, '25. So we'll be coming back with an amendment if some of those ARPA monies in the current year aren't spent. And then we're getting very close to the end here, so just in summary, the budget is comprised of 60 individual funds that are broken down into nine fund types. And the largest fund type is our general fund, which is our main operating fund that totals $47,817,500. And our total budget again is $159,015,394. And with that, right now, we are scheduled to adopt the budget on November 29th, and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have or the public.
Is there anyone from the public to hear to speak tonight? Hearing none, council? Mr. White?
One thing that we didn't cover was the general fund reserves. So I think I remember seeing in here that we're at 94 days, which.
We are, yep, it's in the informational too.
Yeah.
It's in front of you tonight?
It's 94 days. And, and our policy is, the, the strand is between 70 days and, and 90 days, like that, 20 to 25.
25%.
20 to 25%. So we're looking at about $131,000 per day, where those four extra days is about $525,000 over our policy amount, right?
Yes, that would be correct, over the 25.
Okay. So I, I just, just for clarification, so everybody knows that we've got $525,000 more than what our policy is in the general fund, projected for 2023 in this budget. So just wanted to make sure that that was clear.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. O'Brien.
Carol, I know you hit on a little bit, no pun intended, but the cannabis funds, if, say it goes above $500,000, does that money automatically go back into the general fund?
No, it would stay in the new cannabis fund that we're setting up, unless council chooses to do otherwise.
Anything further? All right, are there any objections? I think I'm, I'm supposed to ask that. Yes, Mr. White?
Yeah, I, I think with, and I think it was discussed last week, with the levy being increased as much as it is with us having, you know, over a half a million dollars in excess reserves, I really hope that the council will reconsider the amount of the increase of that levy. The, we're, we're out sending press releases saying, and I know it says proposed, or we're shooting for 1.85%, but when the public reads that, that they think that their rate is going to reduce to 1.8. And I assure you, it's not going to hit that if we adopt the levy we've got right now, because there will be, I mean, history is any guide. Those appeals, while maybe we're fighting them, there will be some that go through, and so we will not hit that number. And so I think if that's what we're advertising, and that's what we're telling people, I, I think if we were sitting on excess funds, and I think we went through this budget, I think they did a great job, I think it's conservative, I think that we funded a lot of things. I hope to God we spend all $40,000 in capital, but again, history is any guide, we probably will not spend all of it this year and get it all done. But I think taxing the people more than we need to in property taxes when we're sitting on excess funds is not appropriate.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
I'd just like to thank the staff for all the work they put into this. It was a lot of work, and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. With that, we'll close this hearing and resume our mini of the whole agenda, which starts back at informationals, correct? So that closed at?
6:42.
6:42.
Thank you. Thank you. Hello? We're at 9.1.
Yeah, I just wanted to give everyone kind of an update on where the RFQ is for the skate park. So I'm going to give kind of an overview. I'm hoping that we have someone from New Line, yes, we've got Kyle, so, no, we've got several people. All right, so the whole process started for me back in summer of 2021, when Renew was engaging the public with the I-74 redevelopment ideas. The skate park and the pump track had a huge response during the input process and the survey. And then from the summer of '21 to 2022, or January of 2022, Renew worked on and presented the idea of putting the skate park and pump track under the I-74 bridge. And as you know, in the January roundtable, the census from the city council was continued to work on this project. During that time, Renew and the city met with other departments, Public Works, police, worked with some people from the general public, presented the input, and received information from the park board, as well as other city departments. Took all that information, took quite a while, had Ansel Blink help write the RFQ and approve it. Before we, we sent it out, the project management team approved the RFQ on August 9th, 2022, and then park board approved it on August 25th. So after that was all sort of done, we sent it out. About a month later, we received five proposals, and from there, the skate park committee, which is made up of Renew Moline, Alex, myself, Rico Novar from Park Board, Dean Wright from Wright Cycling, Jonathan, who you heard public input earlier, is also on there, and then David Stoll, who's a consultant with Action Sports. We all reviewed it. We got five top-of-the-line nationally-known companies that bid on this. So we graded them, we interviewed the top three, and it was pretty clear after the three interviews who we pretty much unanimously picked, and we were very fortunate that we picked New Line Skate Parks, which I'll introduce them in just a minute. Took that recommendation for New Line Skate Parks to the park board on October 27th. They approved it, and then, so we've got two gentlemen here from New Line Skate Parks, and they're going to introduce themselves, tell them a little bit about their company, and then answer any questions you guys have. I did attach their RFP, yeah, RFQ, sorry, to the, to the agenda, but I did also, I also have the other four, if anyone wants to see that later on. But without ado, I will introduce Kyle first. Go ahead, Kyle.
Everybody, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Well, it's nice to meet everybody digitally here. My name is Kyle, and I'm the owner of New Line Skate Parks, also the parent of five young children, and two of them are very, very active skateboarders as well. I've been a skateboarder myself for the better part of 35 years, since I was in high school. And yeah, we're very excited and very fortunate to do the work that we do, and excited to meet, meet y'all, and we're excited to meet the community. Also got Canton Russell, who's our, you know, project director for the US. And between us, we have, yeah, close, close to 1,000 projects of skate park experience under our belt that we've been involved with. But yeah, to share a little bit about, you know, New Line, we're, we're a full-service design and construction firm. We specialize in site-built integrated skate parks. It's sort of all we do. We love it. We do, you know, commercial work throughout North America, and we do, you know, volunteer and other style work all around the world. We're kind of been known as pioneers in what's called sort of site-specific skate park design and citywide skate park master planning. So we've worked with a lot of, a lot of municipalities actually to create, you know, 20 and 25-year master plans for building skateboard, you know, projects and programming, you know, all around the world. And we also, you know, have a unique approach where we sort of design spaces that are comfortable for people, and then we can, we can make any space ridable or skatable, and so we reverse engineer the skateboarding into site-specific, you know, comfortable spaces for people. Currently, we're about 70 full-time people between our design and construction professionals. You know, we're skateboarders, bike riders, volunteers, educators, parents, but also architects and engineers and civil engineers and, and, you know, builders, steel workers, concrete workers, things like that. And, and most of us are skateboarders at the core of what we do. You know, we kind of have a bit of a unique approach to how we do our thing. We, we believe in, you know, involving the community very heavily, because this project is more for your community than it is for us, so making sure that we have lots of participation. We bring the, the youth and the young at heart and the future users of the facility into the, into the civic process and, and consult them all the way along so that they have a say in what ends up there at the end of the day. And then again, whether, whether we end up building it or not, or we're just on the design side of things, because of our experience in construction, we do a very good job of keeping, you know, keeping things on track in terms of budget, in terms of schedule, and we understand how these projects get built. And then we can help with, you know, turning it over, operations, maintenance, and, and programming and things like that. You know, we're, we're pretty excited about the context here. We've done a few projects recently, you know, one in Rochester that we can show as an example in a minute, and one in Birmingham, Alabama, that we just finished, which is a big one. Up here in Vancouver, where I'm from, we've done, you know, we've done a lot of projects that are under sort of highway infrastructure that create some cover and some unique, unique context for these facilities. So we did a site analysis, we came out there, we took a look. We're very excited about the program for this project, that it's going to include more than just skatable terrain, but, you know, talking about restroom, parking areas, and the integration of art, and viewing, and spectator areas, and integrated landscape and drainage, and, and all those kinds of things. We're working together with StanTech, a large engineering firm, I'm sure most of you are familiar with, and we've done a lot of work with them in the past. Actually, we're fortunate to have Canton joined us. He was the leader of their Action Sports division before he came and joined the New Line team over here. So pretty excited about, you know, I guess the canvas. So, pretty excited about, you know, I guess the canvas that we have here to, to work with. So lots of things we're going to be considering as we, as we move through the, the project here. You know, geotechnical conditions, proximity to local waterways, drainage infrastructure, you know, interfaces with everything, you know, some of the downtown revitalization and other projects that are happening nearby that are going to be some exciting, exciting changes for the, you know, for the city overall. So being part of that is pretty exciting. This is our proven process. So we walked, you know, Eric and the committee through how we go through. We've, we've done this a number of times. New Line itself has over four hundred direct projects that, that we've been involved with over the last twenty or so years, as well as our collective experience as a team, have over a thousand skate parks worth of experience. So kind of run through a planning, and then it goes into design, and then through construction and construction administration, and then on through programming and, and operations. But at the heart of everything we do, it's at the community. Most of us at New Line, we were advocates at first, and we were pushing for skate parks in our own home communities. And when we found out that there wasn't firms that specialized in this, we started a firm so that we could do this work ourselves. And so we're, we're big in involving, you know, involving the community, making sure they're part of the process, making sure there's good engagement so that they take ownership over the facility when it's done.
And I'm just going to show this last slide of a project we did in Birmingham, Alabama recently that is a very similar scale and scope. It does have a skate park. It does have a pump track. It does accommodate a lot of multi-use activities, all-wheel. So I'm just going to kind of leave it here. And we do have some other examples or slides we can pull up as needed if you have any questions, you know, in addition to anything you've heard or anything you might want to hear from us about.
Thank you. Mr. Griffin?
Thank you. So Alex is doing a couple of closing remarks, I guess.
Good evening, Mayor Ryaputy and council members. I appreciate the opportunity to be here to support your staff and you in this important decision. As we've gone through this process, and Eric and I, we were talking earlier, you know, we've been working on some of the, the early relationship with ULI since twenty, since July of twenty nineteen. So this is part of a much larger-scale project. You made the important and significant decisions to acquire the Bridgepoint property. This whole area is going to take a very long time to develop. So what we've tried to do with this project is to provide bite-sized pieces, if you will. So in our approach to this, we structured the request for qualifications and with, and the contract to really offer the opportunity for you to use these experts. And these are world-class designers. You heard they have four hundred projects. I mean, you cannot get a better team than this. So as your staff has questions about what this is going to look like, how big is it going to be? How much is it going to cost? How will we make sure that it is visible and safe and used? These are the experts that are going to help make those decisions. And so the request, we understand this is an information item tonight, so no decisions will be made. But I just wanted to urge your consideration to approve the design contract when it comes back to you, if it comes back to you, to allow those questions to be answered about how big, where, cost, things like that. So you can get with IDOT to answer those questions about what they will need to permit it. They've done it before. This will only be the second in the state of Illinois, but it's not the first. So that's the good news. So we urge your consideration. You have a great team in place. One of the things that was compelling about their proposal was that they have worked with Departments of Transportation at the state level. Not in Illinois necessarily, but again, we have good relationship with IDOT Real Estate. We've talked with them in the early stages about what they will need. And I'm committed to stand with your staff and you to see it through, at least to the design. So you won't be answering questions in the abstract. You'll have a design, you'll have the requirements, and then you can make a decision. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions from council or guests or staff and friends? Okay, none at this time. Thank you so much for sharing that. We'll move to nine point two, twenty twenty-three outstanding budget items. Ms. Barnes?
Thank you, Your Honor. We did put hard copies at your place, and we had also emailed these out yesterday. But from our notes from November first, we had two outstanding items for staff to come back for council's consideration. And the first item is, it was a request by council for a grant coordinator. And Bob and Leah got together and with benefits, we, it looks like that position right now as proposed would be a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars with benefits. And what we are suggesting is to take that out of the general fund. And then as grant money is available, we will offset the cost of that position with allowable grant administrative fees. And depending on the type of grant, you can usually get anywhere between three to seven percent. Sometimes it's a little bit more, especially like for some public works projects. So if you look at attachment number one, you'll see this is our staffing request on the three-year basis. The grant coordinator for the twenty-three year, that would be the only one position that is for, up for council's consideration with benefits. If you turn the page then, just so that you know, that would bring our total FTEs up to four hundred and two. It had been four oh one, so now it's at four oh two.
I think we have a question from Mr. Waldron now?
No, I just have a comment. I get what they're saying.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I also want to point out, depending on how these grants come in, it may end up that we split the salaries between, like, the water or the stormwater fund was the one spending the money, and then we get the grant revenue back through those funds. We would have an adjustment at the end of the year to spread that out and split it. So any questions on, on that one?
Mr. Waldron?
I have a couple of comments. As you may have gathered, I'm not for increasing the size of the employees at this time at all. Now, one, one of my other concerns is that the organization in the last two years, we, we saw last year, we added twenty-two new employees, most of which probably aren't even on board yet. A good portion of them aren't. We're still onboarding quite a few individuals, new assistant city administrator, all kinds of new positions. And I'm not necessarily against adding this position. I'm just questioning the timing. With everything that's going on, with everything potentially coming up in the future, I'm not sure this is the right time to add this position. I would propose to you that we consider looking at it in about six months. It still could be budgeted in FY twenty twenty-two or twenty-three. But give staff some time to get breathing, get everybody on board, then take a look at this position. And also, we will going, we'll be going through municipal elections here shortly. And it'll give a time for the new council to evaluate if this is something they want to go forward with after they do their strategic goals. So I would advise or caution or suggest that we put this off for about six months. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mr. White?
I, I appreciate what Alderman Waldron said. I, I, I agree. I mean, the, the proliferation of the number of staff that we have has, not, not just that have been filled, but the, the ones that have been budgeted in, it's the highest, I think, in, in the history, as, as far as, as, as I've seen. And, and so I share your reservation on that. This, though, I mean, we've been talking, I've been talking about having a grant person for a few years, and it just has never happened. I mean, it just, the only reason this is happening is because we finally just said, okay, enough. We're going to force you to do it, put it in, bring it back, and, and, and let's do it. I think this is a different animal than what we've had with the other creep on the, the number of positions that we have out there. Because this, I think there is return on investment that we're going to see. And I, I understand the reservation, but there are so many opportunities for grants that we miss all of the time. We're not getting our fair share. And the sooner we get them in here, the sooner we'll start to, to see that return.
Thank you. Anyone else on this topic? No, thank you. You can please move on.
Okay, the next item was a request by council. And we call it, called it employment stabilization. And it's largely for marketing, for enhanced recruiting, primarily in public safety for police and fire. A hundred thousand was a number that had been talked about at the last meeting. And after talking with Bob, we decided to recommend for your consideration a hundred thousand dollars out of ARPA unrestricted funds that would come out of the one-stop shop. As you know, we had reduced it down to six hundred thousand. This would reduce it down to a hundred thousand dollars with, I mean, to five hundred thousand, with a hundred being allocated for this enhanced recruiting. And if by chance we didn't use it all in twenty-three, because that was another thing we were talking about, what's the right number? Should it be thirty, fifty? Whatever we don't use, we could carry that along over the course of the ARPA, you know, twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six. Or depending on if the council's feeling it's been beneficial or not, we could allocate it to a different project. But we could earmark it for now to be used for that employment.
Yes, Mr. White?
Stabilization.
Was there any discussion on staff? Because I, I think, I think Alderman Schmidt had thrown out the hundred thousand, and I'm not sure where that number came from. I think I threw out thirty or forty thousand, and I just made that up. And so has staff had any discussions or saying, okay, well, this would make sense for police and fire? If we're going to do this program, we think that it would be twenty-six thousand for this one and thirty thousand for... I mean, do we have, since we've had this conversation a few weeks ago, have we looked at it, or, or this hundred thousand, just that's the top number that was given? So that's what we'll budget, we'll use what we use, and we'll throw out what we don't.
I would love to say that if you offered two, we would just take the two. But the reality is, I don't think we know, you know, what the cost of bringing in professional creative folks. I think James has more experience in this field than I or anyone here. And so I respected his number, not realizing that, that we would not go over that, and hopefully it would come under. But I think the real issue at heart is, is trying to recruit police, trying to recruit fire. That is a national challenge. It's a local challenge. I see the chief getting up. He's going to get his two cents in here. You can always calender it. And, you know, I think it goes beyond that. Because as we tried to recruit department directors, that proved to be incredibly challenging. You know, and I'm not saying there's a single director in this organization that's going anywhere. Nobody's giving me the wink of the eye that they're leaving, okay? So I think we're good in that respect. But we spent a significant amount of money with the recruiters. We spent sixty thousand dollars with professional recruiters to get the staff on board that we now have. We still have vacancies, you know, you know. Primarily, there's, I believe, one significant vacancy or two down in CED right now. Part of that eleven-person growth we saw for the current year. One is the assistant director, the other was economic development manager. We need top-notch people because we have some big fish to fry in this city. There's some huge projects, and there's some huge challenges that we have to deal with that go way beyond all things new. We have a lot of rebuilding to do in this community, and not just commercial, but in our residential marketplace as well. So I think, you know, the hundred thousand, I'll let James speak to that number. But, you know, I, I think we, we could use the help. I, I know that in talking to the mayor early, early on, a year or a year ago, you know, be creative, be creative. Trying to find creative ways to work with Leah to try and fill the, you know, nearly fifty vacancies we had a year and a half ago. And I think we're down to maybe twenty, rolling averages maybe around twenty out of four hundred. It's pretty good odds. It's pretty good numbers. Not perfect, but, you know, those are the times we're dealing with. And we're, and we are competing. I mean, we saw two officers that took eighteen months to bring up. Those officers started before I did. They started in May. I started in June. And they're just finally getting back onto the streets. So I'll let, you know, I'll, I'll let it rest at that point, turn it over to James.
Yes, Mr. Schmidt?
Up to the mayor.
I don't know specifically the costs. I wasn't quite prepared to research that as it kind of unfolded prickly last council meeting. However, I can tell you that in two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, when we contracted out to a local company in Rock Island, it was twenty-five thousand dollars per department for the commercial. So there was a police commercial and a fire commercial that were made by that, that company. So there's a, a large chunk of the development of an actual ad. I had a conversation with one of our rotary partners on Monday that runs a, an ad company. So I'll spare Mr. Schmidt any conflict of interest. But I was, I was trying to learn more about some maybe targeting ad, some of this connected TV or connected streaming, ad-specific targeted audience, which he, which I learned was very costly. And I did, it was as much different than a traditional broadcast television, which we're not really sure that that's our target audience. So it does appear that there's some specific expertise in the area, in the Quad Cities, that can accomplish this. A lot, a lot like political ads, political targeted ads for a specific demographic. That would be an enhancement to our, I would say, very, a very good social media platform, but, but an amateur one that we're trying to run on our own. That we did run some targeted ads on that platform. But, you know, again, we're police officers trying to do this, that we're not experts. So I'm, I'm assuming that the cost has gone up since seventeen eighteen when that commercial was made. So I think the hundred thousand is probably within the ballpark for just public safety.
Great. I, I'm a huge advocate of it. I just want to make sure we're in the right wheelhouse.
So I will first start with just the disclaimers, so it's all out of the open. I work as a media planner, buying ads from mine and fire communications, who will not be pursuing this work. And I just think that's important because that puts me in a position where I'm not needing to remove myself or step away, and it's that can act as an asset. But I have done this exact type of campaign in my, my job before. And we've spent, I want to say between twenty-five and thirty-five thousand would be kind of the starting point. And that's for what you need to buy and what you need to go on, and that would be for a signal division. Now, that was not with the level of spot that Chief was talking about. That was with a much lower still images, audio, kind of rather than a, a fully-produced TV spot. There's a lot of variation. And I think for, for a very high-level spot could, would be more in that range. And that depends on a lot of variables. But, so that is where that number came from to me, was looking at wanting to make sure there was an adequate budget to, to cover both public safety departments and make give some attention in there. Not that they would have the exact same solution. I think you'd have to take a closer look to see what's that profile, people you recruit to be police and firefighters, because that's going to be a different, different audience. As well as knowing then that there's still some room to say, hey, what about the other things we need to do along with that? Because I don't think that just marketing is the only piece of that puzzle we should be looking at. And that there may be other opportunities where I would like them to have some money set aside available. Because if we don't have it there, there's no opportunity to say, hey, let's think about what that best solution is. So that's where that number came from.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mceas?
Thank you. And maybe in addition to this, could, could there be a refer-a-friendly kind of bonus that could be thrown out there? If they're here six months, you get a hundred dollars here a year, five hundred bucks. And it could be citywide, any staff member. Because they're going to ask your, you're going to ask your friend, hey, you work there. Tell me about working in the city or whatnot. Just a thought, if we're going to be putting some money into marketing it. Now, we can also utilize, maybe if we don't use all of it, to have our staff be the ones helping to recruit. Just a thought.
So basically, I'm hearing the council supports this bucket of money. But it would be, perhaps. I was hearing that, haven't heard it all yet. But it's clear that the way it gets divvied up is still up in the air. And that would need, maybe, it'd be good to have that come back to council after further research. Mr. Waldron?
I couldn't agree more on the effort, the hundred thousand for, my bone to pick is how we're funding it. You might remember your own strategic goals. You might remember one of those top five strategic goals was the one-stop shopping. Not trying to throw that back at you, but you might remember that one. And I think initially we budgeted, what was it, one million dollars?
Two million.
Two million. What are we down to now? We're down to some software. We let a strategic goal go. Slowly but surely, we trickled it away, and we're down to a half a million. And we're going to get some software, which is great. We've needed for a long time. But one of our top strategic goals has been whittled away to nothing, and now for recruitment for police and fire, which is important. Don't get me wrong. I think if this is a priority now, we should fund it. I think that this is a priority now, we should fund it out of those reserves, like Alderman Went talked about, that exist, and not take it away from the one-stop shopping, which I still hope we can proceed on and get something done with that. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right. Mr. Schmidt, and then Mr. Wint.
Actually, and, and I had not spoken to that point yet, but I am actually very much opposed to taking it out of the one-stop shop as well. I, I, looking at that either as, as into the reserves or into the... I mean, we still have a future allocation bucket showing up on the ARPA list, and those seem like more, more appropriate places as, as far as drawing down this one-stop shop.
All right. You can have the floor, and then I would like to get just some sort of consensus about switching where it's coming from, or not.
Yeah, I, I've been yelling about the one-stop shop for years to, because how difficult it is for somebody who wants to invest and do development in, in the city. But quite honestly, I mean, we had that two-million-dollar number, and I don't know if we ever really understood.
Right.
Well, you know, that was just too, I mean, it's, it's kind of like this. It was just, it was a number. Was it the right number? Did it, what difference is that versus where we are now? I think that there was some discussion about possibly putting in addition, building up the mezzanine down at Public Works, those sorts of things. But I don't know if we ever got to the point where we actually put pen to paper to figure out what the, the costs. Maybe we did. But that's, I think, what we have to better understand. Because, you know, I agree, it went all of a sudden from two million to six hundred thousand. And I don't recall us really having a full discussion about that of, of how it, how it changed. And so I agree with you, and like you said, we, we do have the, the excess. So I, I, I still think we need to, as a community, get to a point where if somebody wants to come in and invest in our community, they are not bouncing between buildings and getting different answers at, at different buildings. So whatever it takes to get there needs to be a, a high priority.
Thank you. I'd like to take a consensus, get a consensus of taking it out of the general fund reserves rather than ARPA.
The excess reserves.
The excess reserves, yes. I'm seeing most everyone. It's okay with that. But just to clarify, this, these big projects were part of our big discussion of where we might have to cut, correct? And that's, that's where it got cut down.
Yes, it was in that major project discussion.
Okay.
Back to your list. And then just finally, and then we'll open it up for further questions. We've just attached a copy of the fund equity that includes the positions and then this ARPA. In, in total, the budget's going to remain the same, but it will change the general fund balance ever so slightly. And I'll get that calculated up for you for that hundred thousand dollars. I, I did want to just point out again, part of doing a three-year budget is not just to look solely at your twenty-three year. Because as we move into twenty-four and twenty-five, and we take a look at the general fund balances, and we went through those that first Saturday, we are anticipating that that could, those balances could drop down into the low twenty percents, so.
Thank you. Mr. Wint.
But didn't we have that projection of the year before about this year? I mean, I, I understand, I, I think the three-year budget is good, and I think projecting in the future gives us an idea. But there's a lot that happens between now and two years from now and three years from now. I mean, what we projected we would be at now is greatly different than what we thought we were a year ago. So I understand what you're saying, and, and three-year budgeting is important because it gives us guidelines on, on where we're moving through. But I think we had the same thing before, and we were supposed to not have any surplus over the ninety days, ninety-four days that we're projecting now for, for twenty-twenty-three last year. So I, I, I hear what you're saying, but it's...
It's a valid point, but also it can swing both ways. We've been fortunate with conservative budgeting, that we have come under budget. But now, in a more unstable environment with revenues and not knowing where inflation is going, it could end up and be that we could be in a shortfall position in any of those given years. I'm not saying it's going to be significant. I think we've worked really hard to be conservatively as accurate as we can. But you're never going to get it right, none of us have a crystal ball. So you've got to be prepared for it to go either way.
Thank you. Mr. Wint.
And, and I don't disagree with you. But if we're talking about having excess money where we're taxing the residents more than we necessarily need to, that's where my concern is. If we're just sitting on excess reserves over our policy, then there's no need to increase the levy on those people so that they pay higher taxes, so that we've got extra cushion for what may or may not happen into the future. Into the future, if we get to that spot, we can address it in, in those years' budgets. But we are above what our policy is by five hundred and twenty-five thousand, maybe now four hundred and twenty-five thousand if we're going to take it off of that, that reserves, which, which I approve of. But still, that's four hundred and twenty-five thousand over the top band of our policy.
Thank you. Mr. Schmidt.
I just, I, I have to take the longer view into the three-year budget. And while, yes, we hope that we will be, find ourselves in those better places. But we have cut back and pushed out different projects, and we know there are big projects coming. As we think about the fire station, as we think about, you know, the skate park, if that's, as we move forward, at the Great River Basin, and everything we're doing downtown, that money is not allocated, is going to have to come from somewhere. And I think if we don't take that longer view and understand that while we are, we are taking up the tax levy commensurate with the amount of what's coming in from TIF one and some of that new construction, we're not capturing the growth, which I think is, you know, that true growth in tax EAV costs is coming from, you know, sales and an inflated market, and I think we should leave that alone. But, but capturing what's coming in from TIF one and ensuring that that money is going to be here in future years. Because we know that when we cut last year as much as we did, that has long-term ramifications. And if we keep doing that, we're going to find ourselves reaching the point where it turns down, where we don't have it. And we don't have the opportunity to do what the citizens expect us to do. And I just think that as we, we look at those projections, I want to follow that long-term vision. And, you know, it is, it is a policy we set, and it is a guidance. But I think that it is also a place where we have that, that leeway to say, hey, look at the inflation that's coming, which is not ending anytime soon. And I don't want to put us in a place where we have to rapidly start increasing taxes in the future, because I think that would be even worse, whereas now we kind of stay, trying to stay right about level. I mean, it's growth this year because of the TIF going down. Otherwise, we probably wouldn't be talking about an increase in the tax levy. Without the TIF, I think that would be off the table. So I just think long-term stability is far more important than four days over that policy. And, and that's how I'm going to vote every time.
Mr. Wint.
To, to the point that this is compounding, it, it's not. It was a five hundred thousand dollar reduction last year. So if we would have done it, then rather being five hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars over our policy, we would be a million and twenty-five thousand dollars over our, our policy this year. And so, and if things went a different way, and we were five hundred thousand dollars under our policy, we could increase the levy to commensurate with that. And so it, it's not like a bank account where you save today, and then you compound interest. It's, it's better to do it now than in, into the future. It is a levy that you set, and that's the money you get to bring in from, from your residents. If you're bringing in more money on top of money that you've got sitting in reserve, you're taking in too much money. If, if we want to discuss other projects and, and all those things. But I think our staff's plate is full. I think that we're reserving an extra million dollars out of that reserve again this year. I mean, we, we're doing a lot of things that are very conservative, that are, that are plotting those things. These ARPA funds are already set for some of those developments and those plans down there. So I, I understand what you're saying, but I, it, it is not a compounding thing over time.
Thank you. Are we at number four? Any final questions?
Yes.
From the council? Anything further, Councilman? Okay, hearing none, we'll move to nine point three, Utility Working Group, Chapter Six, Mr. Dryer.
Good evening. If you recall, that we had a utility working group meeting in early October. And I prepared a memo that kind of outlines the responses we heard from the utilities. I, I identified the relevant ordinances and then staff response. So I was just going to kind of go through that quickly with you tonight, and then I guess answer any questions. So number one issue that we talked about is number one, was secondary's poles and the prohibition or limited temporary use. Only with director permission, identify a process to remove them within a specified period, period of time with minimum spacing requirements. And from the meeting, it was clear that there are a number of pole locations that we would like to see addressed. And I think the utilities recognize that, that there is a problem with that, and that they identified some communication issues between the companies. And we all agree that better communication is always beneficial. The utilities outlined the process of what it should be like to remove poles, to relocate, and how that process should go. They, they discussed how they're working to improve that process, to bring on some new software, but that's not due till twenty-twenty-four. You know, staff recommends that, that service drops, the, the poles, that the lines that run to residential properties and commercial buildings not be considered a secondary pole, as well as streetlights, security lights, and any poles that are needed for structural reasons. We do recommend that we, we want to work with Mid-American to ID the double poles. They offered to provide us their GIS layer if we sign a non-disclosure agreement with them for that. And that's something that we want to do. We want to get our inspector hired so that we can start the process of identifying the most densest population of those poles and start working with Mid-American to see how we can get those removed. So in essence, with number one, we do recognize the benefits that a timeline for relocation and removal would provide. The question remains, does the council wish to regulate this process essentially? So that's, that's a question for the council. Number two was a timeframe for moving of lines off poles and the need to be moved or removed due to construction projects. This one's largely similar to number one with respect to the timing of, of relocating lines and the communication issues between companies. With respect to government projects, to date, staff not had a significant problem with utilities delaying the starting of projects. But we have had issues with some delays associated with project completion due to utility delays. And they report that's largely due to lack of contractors and other associated issues. So we do recommend that utility delays and public project completion be regulated with a twenty-five working day completion clock, which begins from point of city notification with an associated penalty. If not addressed within this timeframe, we were thinking of tuning up four hundred dollars per day. And we would want to be certain that utility delays, that any result in increased costs to the city through delays to the projects, that those companies be responsible for those costs as well. Prohibition of any new lines passing in front of or interfering with traffic signals. In most instances, that's more of an aesthetic issue than safety-related. We do want them to remove the offending utilities, to remove infrastructure that is actually resting on our masked arms or preventing our electricians from gaining access to a signal housing. The door is actually blocked by a cable run, those types of things that we do want to address. Most of those issues are governed by the NESC and the ICC, so we don't really have a, a role in that. Permit number four, permit required for all new poles, replacement poles. We already require permits for new poles, so that issue's kind of a moot point. Number five was identification, location slash location of the owner of each pole. Basically putting a aluminum tag onto each pole. Through this process, Mid-American essentially told us that they are the majority owner of poles in the city, and that we should just assume it's their pole, and if it is not, they would correct the issue with the AT&T, for example, or the other pole owner. So given that, we didn't want to incur an unnecessary cost, we're not recommending any change there. Number six, pole maintenance provisions, uniform height removal of excess space and cuts, et cetera. We believe that's already addressed through the ICC and the NESC code. Number seven, minimum height of wires above ground and grade. Again, that's already addressed through the ICC and the NESC codes for the utilities. So they said if they, if we notice things that look too low to, to let them know, and they would address it, address it post haste. Definition of a project for franchise agreements and clear timelines for restoration of the right-of-way. This is an important consideration, we recognize that. Utilities recommended a restoration timeframe of thirty days. We believe that's too long. The ordinance specifically provides for a ten-day restoration period from when the right-of-way is disturbed. And the key word here is disturbed. So large project encompassing multiple sites, and with the timeline exceeding ten days, without being in compliance, if restoration is done at project conclusion, but rather it should be restored as the project proceeds, as the, as the contractor moves from one worksite to the next. To provide a realistic timeframe restoration, staff recommend a compromise in the neighborhood of a twenty-day restoration period. And we recommend that the security section of the ordinance six dash eleven one oh nine, eleven oh nine be modified, such that if a utility owner fails to complete the work required within the timeframe specified and to our satisfaction, following notice from the city and opportunity to cure, we may cause the work to be done, and the owner or the operator shall reimburse the city for the costs associated with that. And then Ansel Link wanted me to make sure that I mentioned that we would want to make sure to identify that we would not touch any utility infrastructure in, in that process. Number nine was time limit, materials can be left in the right-of-way where on private property. Staff recommend that Chapter Six dash eleven eighteen cleanup and restoration be modified to prohibit storage of materials on private property. And similar to the previous Section Eight restoration, including storage in the right-of-way, we're not opposing a safety hazard be increased to twenty days. We also want to reinforce in your ordinance, the need to provide appropriate protection for the equipment such that we're not creating a attractive nuisance for kids and things to, to get into trouble with. Number ten, reserved open space on all new poles. The utility says that's not a condition we can require of them. And the phrasing of the ordinance actually appears to refer to city-owned poles, for example, our traffic signal poles. And it's intended basically to reserve space for public uses. If, for example, a small cell company wants to co-locate on one of our utility poles, we can say, no, we, we need to save that for police department camera. So we're not recommending any change there. Out of alignment poles, number eleven, Mid-American said just, they gave us a direct contact to their engineering staff, and they promised that they would get those types of issues addressed post haste. And then finally, we'll be pleased to know, undergrounding requirement. Clearly, it's a contentious issue. And in my career, I'm not aware of any well-established or older municipality like Moline that requires undergrounding, except we're technically unfeasible. Rather, most will identify special corridors, gateways to their city downtown, commercial streets that are of greater importance. And they will underground those utilities as part of larger reconstruction projects. And generally, that, that cost is borne at the expense of the city or the project. And I'm told that's how the undergrounding at Pass Street was handled by Alder Waldron. So with that said then, staff recommend the requirement underground 6-11-14 be modified to permit overhead installations along the following lines. Essentially, no owner shall erect above-ground facilities other than to repair existing facilities in the public right-ofway where both electric and telephone service providers have placed their lines underground. Essentially, this is frankly, it's an ordinance that Davenport has been using and which makes some sense and which I was recommending that we use here. And this would be for all electrical facilities except transmission facilities, which are the larger high-voltage facilities. That's essentially it. So out of all the things, that's probably the most critical one is to change to section 6-11-14. And Alder Went provided me his memo of things that he would like addressed as part of an ordinance revision. And I think there are many good things. There's some overlap between this and what I recommend here. The one thing that isn't noted in here that I caught was that it doesn't discuss the undergrounding, which was the last thing I discussed previously. So available to answer any questions?
Yes, Mr. Waldron.
You said that everybody was in the room, was AT&amp;T and MediaCom there too?
We had MediaCom, Metronet, AT&amp;T, Mid-American.
Okay, they were all, other than the 30 days versus our 10 days, which was an argument, and then the underground.
Yeah, we didn't like take a poll, but that was, I think that was Mid-American's number. They were the most vocal generally. But they noted that they felt that the more industry standard time for restoration is 30 days.
Is our proposal out of whack with our area here in the Midwest slash the Quad Cities? Is it?
I think this would bring us more in line with what our friends in Iowa are doing. I think Rock Island and East Moline are still using the model ordinance that our chapter six is based on.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor.
Mr. Timmy.
With the threat of us doing the work and charging them, were they amicable to that? Do they scoff at it? I just think they might rely on it, which might be just what we do and that, you know, we'd send them a bill and they pay.
And that's a concern and maybe that's something that would have, we would have to have some heavy overhead costs that might make it a little less enjoyable for them to use us. We would, we just want to get the work done. We can't have sidewalk open, as Alder Went has noted. And Mid-American noted that. And they agree that that was a little excessive. I think it's a tool that we need to have in there. If they were to start to use it, we can start saying, you know, with Bob and Margaret, and we're just not going to issue any permits until you start cleaning up your act.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Thank you very much. And I think the thing I put together was really based off of kind of your memo, the one that Charles Smith, I think, put together, the other one.
Yep.
And so I just tried to consolidate, so it was a little bit, I guess, more.
Less verbose.
What?
In my version.
But also just kind of characterized it, I mean, or classified it. Of those things that needed permits, those things that needed additional information, but basically just notice, and then those things that are just like, hey, we're the ones that are moving, so our staff knows. So if we get a call from a resident that says, hey, somebody came in and they drove up and they made ruts here, or whatever the thing, we know who supposedly was the person that was out there.
And so that's, and I spoke to CR and explained to him why we needed to have a permit. My concern would be that we don't end up with so many different forms and things that it becomes problematic. I think there's an opportunity to make some changes with the permitting. It all depends on how much David can help us do. We do want to look at software that allows permitting to be done online in an easier way where people who need a permit from the city can go to the central point and get alcohol, license permits, and everything. So that's something we like to look forward to, but that's going to be probably sometime down the road. We are already started to take steps to clean up the permit so that it's self-filling for utilities. Holland has been working with IT on that, make it a little more user-friendly. They are, the utilities are sensitive to having to complete the paperwork. Their view is that they don't have the administrative staff to do that type of work. And so that's one of their concerns, is trying to minimize that.
And I think that that's what I was trying to do. It's like, the big thing, I mean, you're putting a new pole in, you need to get a permit. You're putting a new equipment up, you got to do a permit. But when they do a pole, you know, Mid-American does a pole right next to another one of their poles, and they top the other one. AT&amp;T just moving their equipment three feet to the new pole probably isn't something that they have to go and get a whole new permit. And so that's, I guess, the first part of this memo that I talk about. Because we've run into this pendulum shift from, you know, six months ago, we didn't do anything. I mean, you could do whatever the heck you want to do in our right-ofway.
Now, I'm damned if I do, I'm damned if not.
Well, but, and that's where I think we're trying to get through for as a policy.
And I agree. And I think, like I said, there's a lot of things in here that we're already proposing to do.
But with that said, I think what I'd like to make sure that we give direction to staff on is, you know, I think I had provided 10 locations where there is a topped pole next to a brand-new pole. And I sent it out to you, CR got it. He got the army of AT&amp;T, MediaCom, everybody was ready to go out and move those things. And then.
Need a permit.
But now all of a sudden, the bureaucracy and the red tape has shown up that now it's 45 days because they got to get a permit and then they've got to go and get somebody to cut a check to, from their accounting department to get it to you. And CR had told me, he said, if it was just giving you notice to move three feet, probably nine out of those 10 places would have already been cleaned up, taken care of, and wouldn't be an issue. And so that's where, as a council, I understand when you go from, we're doing absolutely nothing, so now you got to have a permit if you, you know, look at one of our poles. We probably need some common sense middle ground here. And so that's where on here, you know, talk about for the current cleanup of double poles such as moving existing facilities to a secondary pole to a newer adjacent pole that is installed, no permits will be required other than traffic. I mean, if they're in right-ofway, that absolutely makes sense. But this will allow Mid-America to show that they can work with the other vendors to get the substantial cleanup, because the 10 I had given was just basically driving from my house to City Hall.
Well, I agree.
And so I think we should do that. And then obviously, we're going to have to update our ordinance. And I think you have a couple of things in there I didn't include because I might not necessarily agree with them. But I think clarifying some of these other things in here, you know, the 60 days, you know, it shouldn't be aggregated. So if there's three vendors on there, they don't get 180 days. If the first guy gets it done in five days, the next guy's clock starts then.
Oh, absolutely. Once they get notice, that clock is starting with each one would technically, if each one took 60 days, it would be that added.
A hundred percent. And that was just some of the clarification that we've got in here. So I don't know, since it's an informational, if we can direct staff, I don't know what flipping rules are anymore.
No, we just have to get some consensus.
So consensus, I agree with what, you bringing back what you did, but I'd also consensus of this being incorporated with it. And as part of that, I think that utility working group should look at it before it comes back down. Because I think you guys have only had one meeting, right?
Yeah.
You know, and so, I mean, I don't think that they even got to look at your memo or anything. I think it's important that you guys come back. And I have also asked that we get this done. It's two months too short. I think that's probably a reasonable amount of time, but.
I think, well, it's.
With the holidays, be conscious of the holidays.
I would say everything, you know, is totally kosher to take your memo, take any discussion that council has, any other thoughts other council members have for you to incorporate, and then you vote up or down when it does come to council. I would say, from an executive position, Mr. Vitas may need a little flexibility on the exact timeline for when it comes back because of holidays, et cetera, and what have you. So I'm a little, I question this third point here, you have about the two months and the 14 days, et cetera. But that, we leave that to council to weigh in on what's appropriate there. Or guess, Mr. Vitas.
Yeah, I don't want to tie it to a specific timeframe because I think that, one, there's a lot of people involved. We have to be able to meet with them and they have to be available to meet because setting up those meetings took some effort and it wasn't easy. But then we did have a great meeting, there's no question about it. I think, I think, say Mid-American, who owns the majority of the poles, over 60% of them, you know, took a very vocal lead role. And, but there was no lack of concurrence on the part of the telecoms that were present. I think there was general agreement. They operate under certain rules and regulations, whether it's the ICC or National Electrical Code, which governs a lot of it. The end result was, I think, we walked away with a pretty clear understanding from that meeting. And I think what David prepared is almost just a regurgitation of what took place. Because that was the direction to it was, you know, what was the issue that the alderman brought up or the council brought up? You know, what was the position of the utilities or the telecoms? And then what was our recommendation? That's really a little simple approach so that we can get through this and try and get to a simple rewrite of chapter six. My greater concern, and I'm just going to lay this out here, is while we go through this process, whether it's 30 or 60 days to get there, you know, the biggest problem we've been having is is that since June 29th, I mean, we basically, we locked down this city. And the number of calls and requests that came in from MediaCom, who invested in a significant amount of new fiber for our existing citizens, you know, who received their service, who want a higher level of service than what they have with traditional cable. They've been on hold. I can't let it go. He can't let it go. And I think we need to consider, we need to consider, you know, letting these folks do their jobs while we iron out the details. Because right now, as it sits, and I, MediaCom is sitting right here. And, you know, we've met with them in person more than once, we've had multiple emails. And as these three or four spools of fiber sitting there, the city of Moline residents are sitting there to replace the, I believe, the cable that's on the pole, we can't give them a permit. We just cannot, our hands are tied. So I want some consideration from this council for this administration to be able to work with these companies and allow them to get permits while we go through and massage our ordinance.
Do you need that in the form of a motion?
Well, I don't know, I don't know if we can do that right now. But I need direction because it's really become a point of great frustration.
Let me, Mr. Waldron and then Mr. Went.
Bob, is this a, I understand this could take some time. Is this a limiting factor on our negotiations with Metronet?
The answer to that would be yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
I guess what I'd like to see then, and maybe this is, it's not a motion, but what I'd like to see our consideration is, one, that we don't require right now permits for them just moving from a topped pole to an adjacent new pole. I think that that's great. I think, you know, lets you know that they're, who's working, you know, get a Google form and just have them fill it out and it winds up in a sheet. You don't need anything fancy. If you need somebody to set it up, I'll set it up for you. I mean, it's super easy. Give them the link, they fill out the form, you know what's going on. And the other is overlap on existing facilities that are already up there. Again, I don't have any problem, let you know where they're working, if they've got traffic, absolutely. But those two things, as far as consensus, I think that there, I would assume that there is consensus. Let's just get those things done.
So let me assess this, council. We want to let them get these jobs accomplished with good communication to our engineering department. Pretty much consensus from everyone, yes.
There you go, thank you.
And with that, I would hope also, if there's like a riser that needs, you know, like if you've got an AT&amp;T riser, like basically it's into the ground going up the pole and now it needs to move three feet and go a riser, that would be included as well. I mean, there is some ground disturbance, but it's, yeah.
So, yes, Mr. Schmidt. No, I was just ready to summarize where we're at and move to the next item.
Sure. And I just, I just wanted to add, and I'm 100% in support, let's go out, let's let people get back to work and find that middle ground. Because I think that obviously what we were doing before with not tracking or pushing things was not a workable solution, but nor is the restrictiveness that is our current ordinance. It is holding us up in a lot of ways and look forward to us fixing that. And I do appreciate too how that, how we can allow certain those works to resume that are going to be the most critical. Because we've not heard of something where, well, service went out and they literally cannot fix it, that's.
And that's what MediaCom is facing.
I, no, and that is not a situation we should be putting them in. And so I'm glad we're moving away from that. As we think of those other projects then, would that be a place where if there was work that needed to be advanced, would that come through the variance processes? Okay, people, not that I want to establish this as a long-term, but while we're rewiring that code, if someone wanted to push something through, I think it would be appropriate to say, like, push that variance as needed. And that would simply be they fill out the form, you're going to say no, just know that if they're submitting it, you're going to automatically send it on to council.
And I tell them that they have to follow 6-11. God, I can't believe I had to number four.
And I do want to see us fixing the code, but knowing that that's a longer-term project. If there is something that is, okay, it doesn't fit in this easy category, but I do think there is a desire to make sure it's moving forward.
I think if we can allow overlapping, that we'll deal with because that's pretty much all existing infrastructure that they're working on.
Thank you, Mr. Went.
Now, so I think, are we good that we got consensus on those two things?
Yes, we established. Oh, well, we're not the second one that you brought up after consensus.
Which one?
Was the, I think it was the overlapping. We're still.
The overlapping was good.
Okay.
It was the.
Oh, it was the pole three thing?
The riser.
Oh, the riser. Is everybody okay with that?
Everybody okay with that? Okay, please, go ahead.
Okay. I guess the last one is, I think, one of those poles, Metronet had installed a cable on to after our cease and desist, so it was.
16th Street.
Yeah, it was illegally put up there outside of our cease and desist. We need to get it off of there so we can take the secondary pole off. But we told them they can't do anything, so the secondary pole remains. I think that with something like that, say, you know, either approve it, I don't care to move to the new pole, with the caveat that we still say that was installed illegally, so you can't overlap, you can't do those things. But. Moved so they can remove the pole. Is everybody okay with that as well?
Any consensus on that? Mr. Schmidt.
Is that the one that we had tabled a variance on?
Yes. And all I'm asking for is, there's a double pole there and it's stuck where we can't do it because Metronet, nobody will touch it. And we've told Metronet, you can't do it. If everybody else moves their equipment, the two feet to the new pole, it'll get stuck there because we should allow, in that case, Metronet to move over to that.
One second. I just want to make sure, because we are giving some, a consensus direction with no votes as required by an informational. But it's, it is okay to do because we are in the process of giving feedback on how to proceed with the ordinance updates. And that's, these consensus gatherings are part of that. And that's, that, this, these consensus gatherings are part of that. I mean, that's.
I'm on the line on this.
Okay. Well, I'm stating then that I believe that, that because we're giving you feedback on these items and ways to continue to maneuver forward, that that's what we're doing. Mr. Schmidt.
Yes, you are, I'm sorry. Yeah, you are, um, giving your thought is to an interim.
Okay.
Measure while you undergo amendments. But the variance that was tabled will have to be dealt with separately.
Yes. Do you still have a question, Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Vitas.
And I'd like to bring that variance back at the next meeting on the twenty ninth.
Okay. Mr. Went.
Just while we're talking about it, I guess maybe we should get clarification. We talk about that we can't do votes and informationals and all that different stuff. I mean, we went through and we amended Chapter Two that talks about all of our meetings and all those different things. This is just a made up thing that we've decided as a, a rule, you can't vote. There's nothing in our ordinance that says you can't vote in an informational. We don't even talk about an informational as being in our code. This is something, I mean, we've just kind of.
I, I'm going to correct you at the moment that, that there are other sources besides our code that, that inform how meetings are to be conducted. And I'll defer to legal counsel on that.
Well, also, as you know, you can only vote on items on agenda that are there for voting.
For final action.
Yes, and informationals by definition are to exchange information.
That, that, I'm going to leave it at this because we have more to get to, and that there is a process improvement that's always possible. And given the references and the research that legal counsel has done along with staff, that's why things are changing the way that you may not have functioned previously. So we will, if there's nothing else in the Committee of the Whole, we will move to our council meeting. Call to order, please. Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, a good God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Mr. Waldron, do you have an invocation?
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Alder Person Williams.
Present.
Messias.
Present.
Went.
Present.
Timian.
Present.
Moyer.
Present.
O'Brien.
Present.
Waldron.
Present.
Schmidt.
Present.
Your Honor, I request approval of Committee of the Whole and Council meeting minutes on November first, two thousand twenty-two, and appointments made during Committee of the Whole this evening on November fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Second reading ordinances. Council Bill thirty forty-five dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances Appendix Ten thereof, parking prohibited at any time by removing the following locations: Twenty-seventh Street on the east side from South Line of Eighth Avenue, south for a distance of one hundred feet; Twenty-seventh Street on the east side from Eleventh Avenue B, south for a distance of thirty-four feet; Twenty-seventh Street on the west side between Seventh Avenue and Eighth Avenue; and Twenty-seventh Street on both sides from Eleventh Avenue C to the first alley south of Twelfth Avenue. Resolutions. Council Bill eleven eighty-one dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the city engineer to execute an agreement with Crawford, Murphy, and Tilly Incorporated to design and prepare construction plans and specifications for Phase Two of the River-to-River Corridor Trail Project in accordance with the detailed scope of work in Exhibit A. Council Bill eleven eighty-two dash twenty twenty-two, resolution approving a request for streetlight on Fifty-second Street between Thirty-five Eleven, Fifty-second Street, and Thirty-five Thirty-six, Fifty-first Street. Council Bill eleven eighty-three dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing an agreement between Bass Street Landing Special Service Area Number Five Board and NAI Rural Commercial Company for property maintenance services for Special Service Area Number Five for two successive one-year terms. Council Bill eleven eighty-four dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the Human Resources Director to execute a policy with United Healthcare to provide an employer group waiver plan for Medicare Retiree Prescription Drug Benefit Coverage for a one-year period commencing January first, two thousand twenty-three. Council Bill eleven eighty-five dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the Human Resources Director to execute a policy with United Healthcare BP to provide reinsurance coverage for medical and prescription drug benefit claims for one-year period commencing January first, two thousand twenty-three. Council Bill eleven eighty-six dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation agreement with USI Insurance for brokerage services for liability, property, workers' compensation, and underground storage tank insurance for a period of one year commencing on December first, two thousand twenty-two, and authorizing the Human Resources Director to execute any and all documents in order to bind and accept coverage with Insurance Program Managers Group for liability, property, and workers' compensation insurance and ACE American Insurance Company for underground storage tank coverage for a period of one year commencing on December first, two thousand twenty-two. Council Bill eleven eighty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a law enforcement services agreement between the City of Moline and Universal Protection Service, LLC, doing business as Allied Universal Security Services, setting forth the terms for assignment of uniformed police officers to the South Park Mall complex for the period of January first, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Council Bill eleven eighty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation task order number twenty-two dash zero four with Strand Associates Incorporated for engineering services related to completion of a required source water assessment for an amount not to exceed forty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars. Council Bill eleven eighty-nine dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to facilitate the replacement of a gate for a city-owned dumpster enclosure in the parking lot behind fifteen hundred to fifteen thirty-four River Drive with Quality Construction Services Incorporated in Eldridge, Iowa, in the amount of nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty cents. Council Bill eleven ninety dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the Fleet Facilities Manager to purchase a replacement twin-flail mower attachment for the Streets Maintenance Division from Prairie State Tractor in Geneseo, Illinois on Sourcewell Contract Number zero seven zero eight two one dash TGR in the amount of forty-six thousand one hundred and three dollars and sixty-eight cents. Council Bill eleven ninety-one dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the Fleet Facilities Manager to purchase three utility vehicles from Prairie State Tractor in Geneseo, Illinois on Sourcewell Contract zero three one one two one DAC in the amount of thirty-six thousand five hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ten cents. Council Bill eleven ninety-two dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation agreement with Miller Trucking and Excavating for Snow Removal Services. Council Bill eleven ninety-three dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an attestation to a licensing agreement with Sani Investments LLC for use of right-of-way to construct metal landings on the south side of the building at fifteen thirty Fifteenth Avenue for replacement of air conditioning condenser units.
Hang on, please restate that. It's not Fifteenth Avenue, it's Fifth Avenue.
Oh, I'm sorry. At fifteen thirty Fifth Avenue for replacement of air conditioning condenser units. Council Bill eleven ninety-four dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the Fleet Facilities Manager to purchase a Ford F-two-fifty from Section Four to Moline, Illinois for the amount of fifty-three thousand two hundred and eighty-five dollars. Council Bill eleven ninety-five dash twenty twenty-two, resolution authorizing the Fleet Facilities Manager to purchase a new utility tractor for Streets Maintenance from Prairie State Tractor in Geneseo, Illinois on Sourcewell Contract eleven oh seven one nine JDC in the amount of eighty-eight thousand sixty-five dollars and two cents.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Waldron, seconded by Went.
O'Brien.
I'm sorry, yes.
Brown, blue shirt.
I heard. Yep, that side of them. Sorry, motion by Alderman Person O'Brien, seconded by Alderman Went. Point of order?
Just a, a disclosure. I, I disclosed it many times, and I meant to do it during the cow, that I work for Lululele Realtors, which is not rural commercial, but there are family co-ownerships. Uh, I do not work for that company, but I disclose it every time.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alder Person and Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Non-consent agenda resolutions. Council Bill eleven ninety-six dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution authorizing the Director of Public Works to rent a portable compressed natural gas CNG skid from clean energy to tempor- temporarily supply CNG to, to the city's fleet with half the cost to be paid by MetroLink in accordance with the maintenance portion of the city's existing intergovernmental agreement with MetroLink.
Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by O'Brien, seconded by Timian. Discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays, and that motion passes. Council Bill eleven ninety-seven dash twenty twenty-two, a resolution approving the execution and delivery of a fee and leasehold mortgage assignment of leases and rents, security agreement, and fixture filing by and between SCI Moline LLC, City of Moline, and Bank of Montreal pertaining to one oh one Eighteenth Street, Moline, Illinois, pending final legal review through Corporation Council.
Is there a motion?
Motion to approve, second.
Motion by Timian, seconded by Williams. Discussion? Mr. Went.
So I, I know that this is subject to council review. Is, is there a timely issue with this that we didn't get it reviewed before it came to us, or?
No, it actually, legal counsel has been engaged in discussions for some time now, actually, with the, the owners of the hotel. We've had multiple calls. There's been multiple exchanges between the legal councils that are engaged in this process. And this is basically, pretty much agreed to when the original ground lease was entered into and, and the subordination or unsubpo- lack of subordination on, on the, on the ground lease and the two extensions, because that's really what's at issue. There's two fifteen-year extensions that would, that would allow for an additional thirty years beyond twenty thirty-five. So you have the twenty thirty-five original ground lease, and then another thirty years taking it all the way out to twenty sixty-five. And, and then in addition to that, basically, we had already agreed to the subordination of, of the ground lease to the leaseholder, or whoever it would be, in this case, the Bank of Montreal. They're in the process, just so the council's aware of it, following the death of the gentleman who actually owned all of these hotels. He was the gentleman who started, he probably was the one who started the one here in Moline. The family, of course, is engaged. They're involved. And they are going through the process of just basically refinancing the entire portfolio. I think there's twelve hotels in total, one of them being located here in Moline. So what they're doing is they're trying to, they are exercising their rights under the original agreement that we entered into them, both the development agreement and the land lease.
Yeah, and I understand subordinate, I mean, but i- it's just unusual to have a caveat that says this is subject to, to approval, basically.
By legal counsel.
Or, or, yeah.
By Ansel Link, I mean, basically, you know.
But, but, and, and so I guess the question is, why wouldn't we vote on this after it's been reviewed? And then they can come back and give us, I mean, that's why, i- is this a time for, I mean.
I think it's a timely, time issue, if I'm not mistaken.
With, with them?
On their side. It's on their side. It's not us. It's not us.
They need this done before the end of the month, on the twenty-ninth, it's too late, or?
There is a deadline of the end of the month, yes.
Okay, it, it just seems like an odd.
Understood. Thank you. Anything further?
Yeah.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Messias.
Aye.
Went.
Aye.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
Hey, can we get a report back on this, then?
We will. We'll make sure that council's made aware of it.
And that motion passes. First reading ordinances.
Big secret.
Council Bill thirty forty-six dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances Appendix One thereof, traffic control signals by removing the following location: Seventh Street at Eighteenth Avenue and Appendix Five thereof, always stop intersections by adding the following location: Seventh Street at Eighteenth Avenue. Council Bill thirty fifty-one dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance amending Chapter Twenty Motor Vehicles and Traffic of the Moline Code of Ordinances Appendix Ten thereof, parking prohibited at any time by removing the following location: Fourth Avenue Place on the south side from Seventh Street to Eighth Street, with exception of no parking, to remain for thirty-four feet west of the alley. Council Bill thirty forty-seven dash twenty twenty-two, ordinance levying and assessing taxes for the City of Moline, Illinois for the tax levy year two thousand twenty-two, collectible in the year two thousand twenty-three, and acting in ordinance relating to the same subject matter. Council Bill thirty forty-eight dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance levying a special ad valorem tax within the City of Moline, Illinois, Special Service Area Number Five of the City of Moline, Illinois. Council Bill thirty forty-nine dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance levying a special ad valorem tax within the City of Moline, Illinois, Special Service Area Number Six of the City of Moline, Illinois. Council Bill thirty fifty dash twenty twenty-two, an ordinance adopting the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three annual budget. Council Bill, Special Ordinance Forty oh two dash twenty twenty-two, a special ordinance requesting the county clerk not to extend two thousand twenty-three taxes for payment of principal and interest for the general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series two oh one two H refunding general obligation corporate purpose funds, I'm sorry, bon- bonds, Series two thousand sixteen refunding, taxable general obligation refunding bonds, Series two thousand twenty A, and general obligation refunding bonds, Series two thousand twenty B, general obligation corporate purpose bonds, Series two thousand twenty-one A, refunding general obligation corporate purpose bonds, two thousand twenty-one B, refunding general obligation corporate bonds, Series two thousand twenty-one D. And that is all I have this evening, Your Honor.
Mr. Timian.
Your Honor, I'd like to make a motion to amend thirty fifty, two thousand twenty-two, to restrict a million dollars from the general fund to be used for design services for the fire department.
Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, motion by Timian, seconded by O'Brien. Discussion? Yes, Mr. Timian.
The, the intent here is, you know, we've heard that we are above our policy, and, and this is money we're going to spend anyway. We know we are. The fire department needs to be designed. We have the, the study being done. By restricting this money now, our, our policy is, our, our budget policy is well within the, the projected amount. Before this hundred thousand, I believe it was now going to be lowered at twenty-three point five percent of operating. And that puts us within the band that we, we need, and we're going to spend this money anyway, so that's my intention. And I think that it, it signals to the fire department that this is a priority for us.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Moyer.
I'm sorry, I missed the amount. One million dollars. One million.
Mr. Went.
I, I guess, we, we've had this discussion on this, and, and part of it was we're going to wait for the report to come back and see the location because we had discussed about TIFs and, and those sorts of things. I, I just think that this is absolutely premature, and, and as the alderman says, it's clearly just a, a, a way to then go out and say, hey, we're not above our budget because we hid some additional money into the slush fund o- over here on the side that we may or may not wind up using out of the general fund. We may wind up using out of TIF. We just don't know yet. And so I think that this is, is premature. And I think we've already kind of discussed and, and put, put it off. We've made a commitment. We're, we're doing the, um, the appropriate analysis, but there's a good chance that it's not going to come out of the general fund. So I think earmarking this, this money right now is, is just not appropriate.
Anything further? Hearing none. Roll call, please. Then just to restate the, restate the amendment to thirty fifty dash two thousand twenty-two that you are making.
Uh, Your Honor, it was to restrict one million dollars from the general fund for the purpose of design services on the new fire department.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Waldron.
Aye.
Schmidt.
Aye.
Williams.
Nay.
Messias.
Aye.
Went.
Nay.
Timian.
Aye.
Moyer.
Nay.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Five ayes, three nays, and that motion passes. Five ayes, three nays, and that motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to the end of council business. We're miscellaneous. I want to thank Alder Person Went for, I assume you did attend the Veterans Day ceremony in my absence this week. And I know there were great stories out there in the community of lots of people connecting to Veterans Day in a variety of ways, so thank you for being there. Holiday hop, thank you to all the staff that collaborated with Renew Moline to put that on. I heard really good things. We heard wonderful things from an entrepreneur and their CFO today who want to be in downtown Moline. They know that things are hopping down there. This is a, this is good momentum that's been created, so we're looking forward to continuing that. Update you all on the community meeting last night. Alder Person Went and Timian were able to attend, and one member of the Plan Commission. And we listened to the community after a brief overview of where the Plan Commission is at with this ordinance update from Mr. Viedelok. And he had sent you all that PowerPoint previously, so you're aware of that. And then we just turned it over to listening. I would say the balance of things, it was probably a sixty-forty split, fifty-five-forty-five of more people concerned, with major concerns than people who were outright ready to say, yes, we should do this in Moline. So I assured them, there's still quite a process to any of this kind of thing, that we are continuing to listen. I encourage them to write to you all, ask questions. And so that's where we're at. It's still with the Plan Commission, but it's on track to come back to this council in December. You know, barring anything else. So that's what I have. Mr. Williams?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor. As the mayor said, the veterans at the arsenal was a great program. The weather did not, wasn't great for everybody, but it was terrific, so thank you for allowing me to go to that. Also, because we've done it before, I actually got to see Bill Lynn's dad today. He's the officer in East Moline. He's doing much better. He's, they're hoping to have some really good news announced in the next day or two, but he's walking not great, but, you know, moving in the right direction. So the amount of improvement has been amazing, so they just wanted to thank everybody for support and everything. And then the last thing is just a question, because it kind of came up. Do we have kind of an ETA? It's been five months since we voted to negotiate with MetroNet. Do we have an ETA on when we might see a draft, even a draft proposal of what we're thinking about? Or is that, I mean, five months is a?
It's a tender subject.
Pretty, yeah.
Very, very tender subject, and it's a point of contention.
I mean, just as the council, I mean, do we need to be worried about this, that?
Let me just tell you where we're at, because I had a conversation with Scott Shapiro. Scott actually is a gentleman who's leading a negotiating team on their side. He is the person that I communicate with weekly and send an email and say, where is the agreement? Okay? It's been some time since Adam Simon wrote a wonderful agreement, and we provided it to them. Their first reaction was, whoa, that's not what we were expecting, and our reaction was, whoa, that's what you did in all the other cities, so don't give me, don't give us the whoa. They're probably watching right now. Hey, Scott. In my conversation with him today, he said that their Corporation Council had pretty much wrapped up everything they needed to do. They were circulating it internally through the different departments that, you know, need to review it. And I should expect to see it shortly.
That's right, because I mean, I know one of...
That's what I was told today.
One of the things of why people voted was because of the speed at which we were going to get this built out and done, where others would take longer and...
To be frank, he told me on the phone today, they felt that they were being held hostage, and that's why they pushed back as hard as they did. It's probably what's delayed more than anything in the conversation, to be honest. And in the same token, I said, I go, you need to stop ghosting me. I said, I go, I don't like being ghosted, and I go, I feel like that's what's been going on. So I think there's this mutual pushing and shoving back and forth. And a lot of it, I think, is waiting to see what happens with Chapter Six. I know they're genuinely concerned about that. So tonight's meeting was a good meeting. The presentation was great. David, he's gone, isn't he? I think he's outside. But I think we're getting there, and I think, you know, the relationship building that we did with Mid-American and with the telecoms, I think, was critical. I mean, those kind of meetings rarely happen, but that's the first time I'd ever had a meeting like that other than for a major construction project, you know, for a new industrial plant. But that relationship is getting better, so.
Well, I would like to thank you and our staff for continuing to pursue a collaborative environment as opposed to adversarial with those partners that we have for multiple needs in the city, so thank you. And we'll look forward to getting an agreement. Anything further?
Yeah, because some of those utility people have reached out to me, and they said they'd like to meet more. They felt just one meeting wasn't enough, so I think that they'd like to meet more and...
Yeah, Mid-American would like to meet regularly. But, you know, I will say this. I think David did a really great job chairing that meeting, because, I mean, you know, we walked into that room, and there was tension, you know? And his personality, his demeanor, he was able to cut through it, and we got through the meeting. It was a lengthy meeting, but we pretty much hit on all the major topics and issues that we need to look at. You know, and the takeaway is, is at the end of the day, we want to have, we want to have an ordinance that we can enforce, deliver results on, and yet not break their back doing it. You know, letting them do their work under the ICC regulations that govern what they do, as well as the National Electrical Code. You know, there is a happy ground there, and I think we'll end up with a better ordinance than our neighbors on the other side. And in fact, they should probably look at our ordinance. When we're done with it, we'll share it with them, so that there's consistency on the long side of the river.
We aim to be a leader.
We're always a leader. Always a leader.
Thank you. Mr. Timian?
Thank you, Your Honor. Two things. First, on Veterans Day, I was able to serve the veterans copious amounts of coffee at Hy-Vee during the free breakfast. It was a wonderful opportunity to serve. I ran into a large number of my own constituents who either recognized me or saw my name. I was wearing my Homecoming Day shirt, so everyone would know who I was. And some of Alderman O'Brien's former constituents that are now in my ward, you know, talk to me, and just some of my other people. So it was a good time. It was a great time, and I was happy to do so. Second, in order to, I'm just stating this, I'll follow up in an email, but in order to meet the proper criteria, I will be sponsoring, bringing that variance back on the agenda next week with a cosponsor for MetroNet. So I will send that email to the clerk tomorrow to make sure it's on the agenda.
Thank you. Mr. Moyer?
So, you know, for kids, there's Santa Claus at Christmas. For the rest of us, there's adults. It's that leaf collection group that comes through. We watch ticker-tape parade, you know, the whole thing. We can't wait to see them come down the road. They're out there working really hard, and I know a lot of people are, you know, it's easy to get impatient about it and whatnot, but these guys are out there. I can't imagine doing that job. I just want to shout out to them, because even though I live on the south side of town, you know, we wait for weeks, and we have piles, and everybody's being pretty good about it. We just keep putting our leaves out there and waiting. We know they're out there working really hard. We just say we appreciate what they do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing, Your Honor?
Mr. Waldron?
Yes, Your Honor. Reference, I know it's first reading ordinance, thirty forty-six, two thousand twenty-two, the traffic signals at Seventh Street and Eighteenth Avenue. Having a little bit of experience in this area, that when you train people to do something, it's hard to untrain them. And that I would suggest to staff that they put up the informational digital boards. On either side of that, you give them plenty enough notice that those traffic signals are going to go away, because you'll find people blowing through the four-way stop. Okay.
Yes, Mr. Williams?
I believe they're going to put them on four-way flash.
For like a month. To get them trained.
A month or so, to help train, as well as informational stuff.
They've got it out real well. Good. Thank you. That was it. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Schmidt?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you. Strip you test.
Just real quick, I wanted to follow up on what the mayor said about the holiday hop. Other than my wife spending a lot of money in little shops, it was a great event. A lot of people came out. Haven't uttered any complaints. A lot of the vendors were thrilled. You know, Alex did a great job. Eric's been doing a great job as well, as well as the other city staff. This coming weekend, the nineteenth, there's lighting on the commons. Don't forget. Bring your grandchildren. Bring your kids. You know, it's one of the more wonderful events downtown. It's kind of like a Christmas miracle or a holiday miracle with all the little ones. We just don't know who's going to wear the candy cane and the holly outfit that Jeff Manis wore last year. It's too small for Eric, so if we want to chip in, we can get him a costume. Anyway, he has no excuse not to dress up like it. We continue to do our due diligence on Bridgepoint four-eight-five and the acquisition. We have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow, which is really an ops meeting to literally sit down with our ops team and their ops team and literally pour through that building and get a clear understanding of what is where, how it works, so that we can not only maintain it properly, not have any pipes freeze or break in the wintertime, and by the same token, be able to support those tenants who are still in there calling it their place of business while the city decides where the future is for that property. And last, but not least, since there's no meeting next week, Happy Thanksgiving, everybody. Might not see you all before then, so just passing on Happy Turkey Day. That's it.
Anything from any other staff? Yes, Mr. Kirk?
Lighting of the commons, we have only one Santa, so if you're going to bring your children or grandchildren, come early, because the line is always long. And Josh Duffy will be playing.
I have an extra Santa suit if you want to use it.
There's only one Santa. I already asked. Josh Duffy and his jazz band will be performing throughout the event.
Wonderful.
Great. Is there any other public comment this evening? And no executive session? Oh, we do. Oh, I'm sorry.
That the common convene in executive session so the purpose of discussion of pending probable or imminent litigation, five ILCS one-twenty slash two C eleven.
Second.
Motion by Williams, seconded by Went. Roll call, please.
Alder Person Waldron?
Aye.
Schmidt?
Aye.
Williams?
Aye.
Macias?
Aye.
Went?
Aye.
Timian?
Aye.
Moyer?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Eight ayes, no nays.
All right. We are going in.